I've never done this before, but sometimes things happen where you have to sort of go outside the box a little bit. After we get the meeting started, go through some of the preliminaries, we'll do something called a consent calendar. At that point, a motion will be made to move Article 23 forward. Reason being, not because of the merits. It's got to do with the fact that we have 600-plus people here. And, you know what? If we knew we were going to have that many people, we might have done something a little different. We knew we'd have a lot. But that's how it works sometimes. This is an open town meeting. It's the purest form of democracy. So I just want people to know that. So those of you who, like myself, are adamant about the fact that we don't like to move motions around and articles around and stuff like that, tonight's a different night. So, after we get through the preliminaries, okay? We'll have a motion for Article 23. We'll deal with that. And then we'll move on to the regular meeting, hoping that most of you will stick around to learn how the whole thing works. Thank you very much. So, um, I'm ready to start.
Yeah, go.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just... Got it. Okay, good. The time is 7:22. I now call to order back from recess, annual town meeting for 2022. And I do need to put my spectacles on. Oh, look at that.
One legal.
Definitely have a one. This is an honorary amendment to the town by law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board of Selectmen, the chairman of the board, if you could recognize, we'll have everyone stand. We'll do the pledge in a moment of silence. So, could all rise, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to also ask, you can remain seated, please. Please remain seated. I'd like to ask that we have a moment of silence for the county officials and those within the community who have passed away over the last year. Please, a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. We'll deal with the visitors later. Um, essentially, let's do this. The board's okay with this. Why don't we just deal with 23 now? Then I'll go through all the procedural stuff later. I think that's the best way to deal with this. So, if there is someone who has a motion regarding 23... Hang on. Once he gets to the microphone, microphone's over there. I... I wanted to... I... You know what? That's going to take a long time still. I'd like to just deal with this, see where we are, then go into the typical thing. I understand what you're saying, but at this point, I think we need to do that. So, please, quickly, because we want to move this along.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michelle Antirelli, 148 South Street. At this time, there is no mechanism for challenging the vote. The moderators count. The people in the galleys cannot see one another as they raise their red or green cards. They have no method to challenge the count. Therefore, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting to a time to be... You guys get to vote on this. Don't worry. To adjourn this meeting to a time to be determined when it can be outside with full ventilation, full participation by all members of the community that want to participate.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay? If there's no second, we can't move forward with it. Okay? There's no second? So we can't move forward with it. I'm sorry.
No, thank you for considering it. I will call...
Yeah, we really need to move to get things going with the...
I appreciate that. Um, I just want to make everyone aware that the ASHRA standards for indoor air for CO2 is 700 parts per million more than outside reading.
I've opened the back door. Please.
I've just taken the... Just so you're aware, like, if you guys want to vote and leave, you need to have this information.
Ms. Antirelli, please...
It's now 1,461 parts per million, and we haven't even started discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Antirelli, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen? Ladies and gentlemen? We have a motion that's going to be made so we can move things along more efficiently. So let's have that happen. Ms. Robertson?
Yes, hi. My name's Kathy Robertson. I live at 59 Fowler Street. And I so moved that Article 23 is taken out of order in the hopes that we can, you know, a couple people will leave the meeting. We do advocate that anybody who is here for Article 23 remain at the meeting because there's a lot of other important things that are happening. But we expect that there will be an exodus after this vote is taken. So...
Right. I understand. Is there a second? There's a second. It has been moved and seconded. Hang on. Just because we're doing things a little bit different doesn't mean we're not going to do them according to the law. So, therefore, a motion has been made and seconded to move Article 23 forward. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, this is what's going to happen. If you're in favor of that, you're going to hold up a green card. If you're against it, you're going to hold up a red card. Don't do it yet. And... If there's a majority of you that we say we move it, we move it. So, all those in favor of moving it, hold up your green card. Put them down. All those opposed, hold up your red card. The vote passes by a greater-than-two-thirds majority in case we have to do that. So therefore, we will now deal with Article 23 right now. Who has the motion for Article 23? Go ahead.
Michelle Estashia, 211 North Street.
You know what? Pretty much everyone's gotten here. Those of you in the back, move to the side. Those on the sides, move forward, please. Keep moving in as much as you can. Yep. We can use... Actually, everybody's in here. I actually do not see a line out there. Thank you. I see a thumbs up back there. No line. So, if I could have...
Raise yourselves. This is three cards long, so...
Let her make the motion, please.
Article 23. I moved that the town vote to acquire for open space and recreation purposes approximately 94.22 acres of land on Mechanic Street and Fowler Street in Upton, shown as Assessors Map 14, Parcels 55 and 48, and described in deeds recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Book 13344, Page 291, and Book 13344, Page 295, and for costs incidental or related thereto, including legal title appraisal, engineering, and other costs or fees. That's the first paragraph, folks. There's more.
Please be quiet, folks, and let her get through this.
And further, to fund said acquisition to appropriate and transfer up to $353,462 from the Community Preservation Open Space Unreserved Fund balance and $389,538 from the Community Preservation Open Space Fund balance. Did I read those numbers right? I'm not good with numbers. But it's 389,538. Is that, just to be clear? From the Community Preservation Open Space Fund balance, with the balance of the purchase price being funded by gifts and/or grants, with the expenditure of said community preservation monies contingent upon the town receiving gifts and/or grants in the amount of at least $200,000 and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire said land by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain with the care, custody, and control of the property to be vested in the Conservation Commission for passive recreation and open space purposes under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen and/or Conservation Commission to convey a conservation restriction as required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 12A, meeting the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 184, Sections 31 to 33. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen or its designee to apply for and accept and expend any funds that may be provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and/or other public or private sources to defray all or a portion of the costs of said acquisition, including, but not limited to, grants and/or reimbursements, including, but not limited to, grants and/or reimbursement from the Commonwealth under the Self-Health Act, General Law, Chapter 132A, Section 11, now so-called land grants, and/or any other state or federal program, said gifts or grants to be deposited in the Community Preservation Fund from which said funds were appropriated hereunder.
Thank you. Is there a second? Good. Fincom recommendation? CPC recommendation? Okay. And... Does the capital budget have to make a recommendation? Yes? Is that a yes? Okay. Thank you very much. So, before we begin any discussion, town council, some of the language in here was a little bit different than the language in the article. Okay? Given that, are you seeing any concerns leaked from a legal point of view with regard to some of the language that was in here? Or was some of the language put in here for legal purposes? If I could ask that question.
Mr. Moderator, could you just repeat your question, please? It was just a little garbled.
Sure. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. There was some language in here that didn't fit exactly with the article itself. Quite often with things like purchases of land and so on and so forth, an article gets written, and then certain legal things happen such that they need to change some of the wording. So, with respect to the wording of it, was there anything from a legal point of view that was of concern to you?
No, Mr. Moderator. No. The motion was appropriately presented, and it identifies a funding source, and it's appropriately before the meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, good. So, is there any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, sir. Please state your name and address if you speak. Go ahead.
My name is Bill Taylor. I live at 211 North Street. And I have prepared for the meeting a brief presentation on the project.
Brief? Thank you.
And just, I am a member. I am the chair of the Open Space Committee. And I, if you could appear before you in that capacity.
Do you feel comfortable not wearing your mask for the moment while you're speaking or not? It's your call. Just hard to hear you. Thank you.
Much better. All right. So the project I described is to purchase 94 acres on Fowler and Mechanic Streets for open space and passive recreation purposes. The land is enrolled in Chapter 61, so the town has a first refusal option on any offer made by a buyer that plans to change the land's use. And the town has 120 days after notice of such offer to exercise that first refusal option. The town was notified on February 12 of the owner's intent to sell the land to Saxon Partners for $900,000 for the purpose of building a 200-plus-unit apartment building pursuant to Chapter 40B. The town must exercise this option to buy the land by June 10. The appraised value of the land is $900,000, as is also the cost or the amount offered by Saxon Partners, which is an amount we need to meet. The cost of the total cost of the project's $943,000, $900,000 for the land, and $43,000 for survey, legal, and environmental review costs. The funding will consist of a $50,000 donation by Sudbury Valley Trustees, at least $150,000 in private donations, and $743,000 from the Community Preservation Fund. And when we use Community Preservation Fund money to acquire land, we have to put a conservation restriction on it. And in this case, Sudbury Valley Trustees will hold the conservation restriction. The reason why we're bringing this project to you, the land abuts Stefan's Farm and Robertson Family Conservation Area and enhances, as a result, the ecological value of all three properties. It protects the Warren Brook, which is a cold-water fishery and a source of the town's water, and also a vernal pool. It preserves Upton's rural character, and it extends the town's trail network. It connects Stefan's Farm, which is to the north of the parcel, to the Upton State Forest, which is to the east through the Robertson Family Conservation Area, which has trails on it that lead from one side to the other. The land is accessible from the Stefan's parking lot, so there's ready access to it. Hunting will be allowed outside of the 500-foot safety zone. And this achieves a long-term goal of preserving the property. This property appeared in the 2005 master plan as a preservation priority and has appeared in several other town planning reports as a preservation priority. It increases the value of nearby properties, and it also avoids potential tax increase through the cost of providing school, public safety, and other truant services to the proposed development. Next page, please. And this here is just to demonstrate the extensive trail network that exists already and how this land connects basically one side to the other. The trail that's shown on the left-hand side is a possible nine-mile loop. At the very bottom of that loop is the Mechanic Street link, and the very top of that happens to be the trail across Sweet William Farm. Next. And finally, just to reiterate, the project budget. Cost of land, $900,000, $43,000 in various expenses, offset for a total of $943,000, offset by $50,000 from the Sudbury Valley Trustees and $150,000 in private donations for a net ask of the Community Preservation Fund of $743,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. So, seeing no more discussion, this is how it's going to work. If you want to vote yes and agree with this, you will end up holding up your green card. Not yet. You know you'll hold up your red card. What I'm going to do is a scan of the audience. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. Well, scan that. If I see that it's clearly greater than two-thirds majority, it will pass. If it's clearly not two-thirds majority, it will fail. If it's... I'm not really sure, then believe it or not, we'll have to have a count. Okay? We'll deal with that if it happens. All right? I just wanted to explain to everybody how the process works. Okay? So, yes. Kathy, do you want to make other statements or not?
Yeah. Mine's a lot shorter than that one. But I wanted to let people know I am speaking on behalf of a very large coalition of local residents concerned about the development of a large apartment complex on property located at the crossroads of Mechanic and Fowler. I am voicing our strong and wholehearted support for Article 23, which approved will enable the town to purchase the parcel and control its future. I am sure that most attendees at this meeting are well aware of what's at stake. To quickly synopsize, a developer has made an offer to purchase the land and build a huge apartment complex. According to the latest offer, that complex would have more than 200 apartment units. State law allows the developer to do this. The same state law allows them to proceed without conferring with the town and without providing funds to mitigate the impacts on roads, infrastructure, and town services. The burden will be left to taxpayers. The cost of hosting this apartment is expected to exceed any tax revenue generated. Decisions such as this should be made by town residents, not an outside developer looking to line his pockets at our expense. I want to thank Kelly for her patience as we work through this process and the town officials for accommodating us and taking the time to listen to residents' concerns. I also want to give bigger shout-out to everyone who got involved and who showed up at tonight's meeting. Because of you, we raised awareness of the high stakes of this development. Because of you, we have raised nearly $200,000 in less than three weeks. Because of you, we will win tonight. Vote yes on Article 23 and protect Upton's future. Thank you.
Folks? Thank you. Mr. Fowler?
Am I allowed to make an opposing opinion on this?
Yeah, that's fine. Try to be brief, though, because it is such a big fight.
I would like to endorse the idea that we buy this property.
Name and address first, please.
I think it's a wonderful idea that we...
Name and address, please.
Oh. 55 Mendon Street, Upton.
Fowler?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. I'm all for buying the property to avoid the disaster of having a common complex put on it. But I really see a problem with turning it into instant junk after we buy it, like putting so many restrictions on it, it has no value. I would more than be happy to buy it without any conservation restrictions. So I propose to buy it and turn it over to the Board of Selectmen and chatter them with a mission of finding a proper use for it other than wasteland. Thank you.
Who's next? Oh. You want to make an amendment? Don't worry. We'll deal with it quickly. You want to make an amendment? Do it quickly, sir.
I will bring it to you.
Why don't you bring it to me? I will read your amendment. Mr. Fowler, this is not an amendment. This is like a whole motion. I'm sorry. An amendment needs to be quick and brief and... I'm going to... Is that whole thing the amendment? Okay. I'll read it. Okay. This is an amendment. The city of town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply by gift, purchase, eminent domain, et cetera, land located off Mechanic and Fowler, et cetera, to be held in care and custody of the Board of Selectmen to convey for appropriate use once approved by the governing body. And as for the funding, therefore, to raise and appropriate, transfer from funds, including preservation, the sum of $965,000 for the costs and expenses associated with the acquisition. Is there a second? Okay. Moved and seconded. This is just the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Flaherty.
A discussion?
This is just on the amendment.
A discussion? Yeah, we don't need the mark. A discussion similar to this was had prior to this meeting. The financial committee agrees that the part of the land should be purchased. What we're doing here is we're not buying open space. We're preventing a 40B, and that's actually what we're doing here. That's fine. What the proposed amendment does not show is that how are we going to buy this? Some of it has... If you're buying with community preservation money, that part has to be specified. If you're buying it from raise and appropriate, that area has to be specified. You can't mix and match the general fund and community preservation monies. I think what Mr. Fowler is presenting does have merit, but it's not the discussion to have tonight. This can be discussed going forward. There's a lot of hoops you have to jump through before you can... Before this is going to be resolved. The prudent thing tonight would be to reject this amendment and move on to the main item.
Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, hold up your green card. Okay? All those opposed, hold up the red card. Back to the original motion. Sir? Name and address, sir.
David Brooks, 3 Cranberry Circle, and in my personal capacity. I'm going to make myself unpopular. First of all, a minor point. Some of the paperwork out there said this would not increase our taxes, but we are depleting public funds. This money doesn't come from heaven. The $743,000 represents $90 ahead, which will have to be made up in the future out of public taxes. It'll represent things we can't spend money on other projects. So let that be clear. This is not magic money. However, I was perfectly happy not to say anything during Mr. Taylor's presentation because I am in favor of preserving open space and keeping the vernal pools clean and so on. But the motivation behind this, to prevent housing which can be used for less-well-off families, affordable housing from coming to Upton, I have a strong objection to. I recognize it's going to pass today. But people of Upton understand if you keep buying up land to prevent 40B housing, 40B housing will be forced upon us, whether we like it or not. I will have no say in the matter. Another thing. Recently, last year, the state passed laws to say we must build multifamily housing intended for the 200,000 people who are now without adequate housing in the state. Upton's going to grow. Metro West is going to grow. So I want you to consider that in the future. If we make a habit of doing this, we will be poorer off. We will lose access to state funds, and we will generally fall into a backwater and not grow. Again, I recognize this is going to pass, but I reject some of the motivations for it.
Valid point. Valid point. Mr. Andrews?
No, please. William Andrews, 84 High Street. I move the motion.
Okay. So there's been a motion to move it, which means you've heard enough. There's been a second. So, this is what's going to happen. If two-thirds of you feel like you've heard enough, you'll hold up your green card. If you want to hear more, you'll hold up your red card. Get it? Okay. So, all of you who want to move the question, hold up your green card. Thank you. Down.[1671.83] Thank you, down. All of you who want to not move it, hold your red card up. We're going to move the question unanimously. Wow, that's good. Now we're going to vote on it. Okay? Thank you. So, all those in favor of the motion to acquire, i.e. eminent domain etcetera etcetera, this piece of land here with all the stipulations you've heard, signify by holding up a green card. Okay, put them down. All opposed, hold up a red card. Okay, the motion passes by two-thirds majority, thank you. Now... So, before we move on, it really, it pains me to say what I'm going to say right now. Some, some of you probably need to leave because the chiefs here are like concerned about the total number of people we have in this space. So it pains me to say that. Some of you, if you wish to leave, you've got my blessing to do that. The rest of you stick around and we'll have the rest of the town meeting in about five minutes. Thank you very much. So ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank those of you who have remained to be here for the rest of the town meeting. And believe it or not, I want to thank those who have exited. So now the chiefs don't have to give me the hairy eyeball anymore. So chiefs, thank you very much for allowing us to get through this. I do appreciate it very, very much. So, let us now go through the typical process that we go through here. So, we have a bunch of visitors. I want to read the visitors and then I'll ask for a motion to accept them. Jay Byer, Mendon Up the Regional School District. Joseph Layden, the incoming town manager. Okay, we'll introduce him more formally later, okay? Maureen Cohen, Superintendent, Mendon Up the Schools. Sherwin Kirkpatrick, Assistant Superintendent. Matthew Bachso, Library. Nick Chaven. I didn't, Nick Chaven, oh, a child, beautiful. We have a young person here, very good. Marianna, Marissa, Paul Mashand and some others. Children, their children are here, beautiful. Meredith Houghton, Jason Shepard. Something, I'm sorry, Philip Plotkin, I believe. Brian, Brian Mazur, Town Council. Yeah, Brian, Town Council, thank you, yep. Jared Collins, another Town Council person? Oh, double duty tonight, oh boy. Dennis Westgate, Interim Town Manager. Kenny Cost, the Finance Director. Paul Delaculla, Town Planner. Maria Toomey, Recreation Director. Dr. Fitzpatrick, Blackstone Valley Tech. Beautiful, those are all the visitors. Thank you. Second, any discussion on allowing them to visit? Seeing none, all those who have signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Oh, okay. One of the things some of you are going to realize, I know we have green and red cards now. I've been doing it a certain way for 28 years. It's getting, it's difficult for me to forget that I'm not supposed to ask for voice votes and I'm supposed to ask for the cards. So if I make that mistake again, we've got this wonderful town clerk here to remind me of that. Okay, so thank you very much, Madam Town Clerk. All kidding aside, the reason for the cards, all kidding aside, the reason for the cards is quite frankly because of the COVID and all that. But it has had a positive, I'll call it positive unintended consequence. What that is, is for votes that are like, let's say 60%, 40%. If you have a voice vote, there's no way I can call that because it's just too close on the voice. But if I, I can see about 60%, if it's green and 40% that are red, I can easily make that call and say that it's a majority, let's say. So that has had a positive consequence. So in a way, I'm glad we're doing this. We will keep doing it in the future with the cards. Okay, thank you. All right, so, see where we are. All righty, you know what, the articles, okay. Warrant, articles, motions, you've seen that happen already. Finance Committee recommendations if necessary, sometimes other committees. That's the microphone over there, it's there again because of the situation that we are in. No personality statements, I think most of you understand what that means. If someone's speaking, you be quiet, don't interrupt them. If you don't like what they say, you just can't get up and berate what they said. You can say something like, "I respectfully disagree with the previous speaker's motion or statement regarding this and this is how I feel." That's a nice way to say it. Okay, so, one of the things that hardly ever happens, but once in a while, if there's a speaker who is really out of line and I need to reprimand them, these are the steps I go through. I will say, sir or madam, step back from the microphone. I will then explain to them what the infraction was. I will ask them if they can continue. I want to give them the opportunity to change the errors of their ways. If they then start speaking again and they're fine, we're all set. They start again and they're still out of line, I will then ask them to take their seat. If they refuse to take their seat, I will ask them to leave the meeting. If they refuse to leave the meeting, there's an officer in the back who will escort them out of the meeting. I will say this, I am proud to say, for 30 years I've been doing this, only two or three times have I even had to ask a person to step back because they were speaking out of order. We've never had to go beyond step three. And that's because of all of you. You know why you're here, you ask the right questions, people give you answers, then we vote on things. That's what we do when we're in democracy. So thank you all very much for staying here to go through this process. Okay, if there's nothing else, I do need the motion card for what we call the consent calendar. What that is, a consent calendar is all those motions, every single year we just vote on without any question or discussion. So if there's somebody with the motion card for the consent calendar, thank you very much. So, you know how one or two have been taken out, right? Okay, good. So Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Maureen Dornell, will read the motion for the consent calendar. Go ahead.
I move that the town vote by unanimous consent. The following articles that have not been requested hold. Those consent calendar articles being 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 12A, 12B, 12C and 13.
Okay, there's been moved and seconded for those to be on the consent calendar. What I will do, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'll take your, I'll take the card and I will quickly explain. Yeah, that's all I want, yeah. I will just quickly tell you what each of those are so that you know what it is that we're voting on unanimous consent. Article 1 is accepting the town, the town report essentially. Article 3 is the water enterprise question. Article 4 is the wastewater enterprise. Article 5 are the revolving funds. Article 6 is the cable funding, thank you very much. Article 8 is the Chapter 90 funds that we get from the state. 12A is community preservation, money that goes into the legal places where they need to go. 12B, similar to that. 12C is the community preservation fund, money for the town hall. And 13 is the, oh, money that the Board of Assessors needs to do the appropriations. And again, every year we have to vote on these, every year there's never a discussion about them. So, if any of these want to be held, now's the time to do it. Seeing none, then, I would like to ask all of you to hold up your green cards for unanimous consent. If you're, very good, thank you very much. Excellent. So, those who have voted on and passed, they're done. Okay, we now move to Article 2, which is the budget process. So, we'll have the motion and after the motion is read, I will then explain to you how we do that. Go ahead, Mr. Flaherty. Okay, second? Moved and seconded? So, this is what I want you to do. Hopefully, all of you, or at least your family, has this document right here. Finance Committee Report. This is what we're going to look at right now. I want you to open this to page 15. 15, bottom, middle of the page. Over to the right, it says page 1 of 20 something or other. 1 of 26, thank you. So, open to page 15. The very top, it says Upton Budget Fiscal Year 2023 Summary. You see before you four columns next to the account names. First column is Approved Budget 2021, so that's two years ago. The second column is Approved Budget 2022, that's last year. The third column, that's the one. Finance Committee Recommendation 2023. That's the one to focus on, okay? Fourth column is the percent change from 2022 to 2023. So, as I go down through each department, if you have a question in column 3, you'll yell "hold", I'll ask you which it is and then we'll hold that. Now, this is really important, what I'm going to say right now. If you haven't looked at this before tonight, now is not the time, quite frankly, to decide whether you want to hold something or not on some whim. Okay? These have been out for at least a week or two. So you need to study this ahead of time so that if you have concerns about a particular budget item, you're ready to say "hold" when I get to that department. Okay? That's the only way that this works efficiently. So I just want to explain that to you. So if you haven't done the process yet, when you get ready for next year, it's important to do that. The Finance Committee works really hard to get this information in as quickly as they can. If they didn't do that, we couldn't do this as quickly as we do it, okay? So, are there any questions before we go through the holding process? Okay, seeing none, I'll go department by department. So, Department 113, Town Meetings, Elections. 114, Town Moderator. 122, Selectmen. Next page. 123, Town Manager. 131, Finance Committee. 132, Reserve Fund. 133, Finance Department. Next page. 135, Accountant. Okay. 137, Capital Budget. 141, Assessors. 145, Treasurer Collector. You might notice that some departments have zero because there's been some structural changes made. Okay, that's why that's happening. 151, Legal. 152, Personnel. 158, Tax Title Full Closure. 159, Management Information Systems. 161, Town Clerk. 163, Registration. 171, Conservation Committee. 175, Planning Board. 184, Housing Authority. 192, Town Public Buildings. 210, Police. 220, Fire EMS Department. 232, Ambulance Service. 241, Code Enforcement. 291, Emergency Management. 292, Animal Control. 294, DPW Parks and Forestry Cemetery. 300, Education. 421, DPW. 422, DPW Highway Construction Maintenance. 423, DPW Snow and Ice Removal. 433, Waste Removal. 491, Cemetery. 510, Board of Health. 541, Council on Aging. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. 522, Health Service. That's page 15. Okay. Next page, 541, Council on Aging. 543, Veterans. 610, Library. 630, Beach. 691, Historical Commission. 710, Retirement of Debt. 725, Debt Service Short Term Interest. 820, State Assessments. 911, Retirement. 913, Unemployment Compensation. 916, Payroll Taxes, Medicare. 945, Liability Insurance. 950, Trust Fund Committee. 990, Transfers Out. This last section, Warrant, Articles, we will be dealing with them in the warrant, correct? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, the revolving funds, we've already dealt with those, right? Okay, so it says, it says Section 25 Revolving DPW etcetera. We've already voted on those things in the consent calendar. So where does that bring us to? Enterprise is done. Yep. Oh, that's a summary. Okay, fine. So, actually, nothing was held. I think that's the first time that's ever happened. So, I want to do this, I want to thank the Finance Committee and the Finance Department for putting together such a great document for that to happen. I do want to just caution one thing. I hope that, simply because we didn't have any holds this year, that people don't think that we shouldn't go through this process. We should go through this process because this is one of the checks and balances that we have in Upton to help make sure that things work the way they're supposed to. The job of the Finance Committee, the Selectmen, School Committee, Finance, everybody here is to put together a budget that's sound and makes sense. Your job is to take a look at it and see that it does. And if it does and you're fine with it, that we go through this and we don't have any holds and everything's fine. Okay, so, thank you very much, thank you Finance Committee. So, is there a motion? We have a motion to vote on the budget as is. Favorable recommendation from the FinCon because they're the ones who put it together. So, all those in favor, hold up your green card. Put them down, all those opposed, there shouldn't be any because it's unanimous consent, thank you. And Article 2 is done. Okay, so, now we're going to jump ahead to, let's see. First one, Article 7, is the first one that wasn't on the consent calendar. Okay, Article 7, motion, please.
Mr. Moderator.
Yep. There you go. Well, hold it there and just talk, Mr. Flaherty, it'll, yep. Moved and seconded? FinCon recommendation? Okay. Town Council, if we move money into stabilization, is that also required with two-thirds or is that just the majority now? Thank you very much, okay. So, we're moving money into the stabilization fund, any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, hold up the green cards. Put them down, against red cards, motion carries unanimously. Article 9. Right, we did eight, right? Eight, okay, good. Nine? Chairman Dornell?
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $283,226 to be used for the construction and/or improvement of town roads to supplement those provided for under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Mass General Law, Chapter 90 Program.
Moved and seconded, FinCon?
Very low action, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? Oh. Sorry. Yeah, thank you. All those, all those in favor, hold up your green card. Okay, opposed red? Unanimous, thank you. What are we up to now? 10, no, we didn't 10, did we? Oh, that, oh, I'm sorry about that, yeah, Article 10. Mr. Flaherty? Just, you just talk and hold it in front of you, it'll work, even if it doesn't. Everybody will hear you anyway, sir. I'm sorry. Your second? Moved and seconded, thank you. FinCon recommendation? You'll notice that, minor detail, you'll notice that this number is lower than what's in the article. It's okay to do that. What it means is that they didn't spend as much as they might have thought they would and it's 25,000 less. Mr. Flaherty? So... All right. So, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those in favor, hold up your green cards. Thank you. All opposed, hold up your red cards. Motion carries by majority.
Um, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,000 to supplement the town's conservation fund.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. And could you state your name again real quick so that we know who you are? Thank you.
Marcela Stasha, 211 North Street.
Thank you very much. There you go. This is a $5,000 movement into the Conservation Committee. It's been seconded. FinCon has recommended it, correct?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Woo-hoo. We got you now. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, hold up your green card. All opposed, hold up the red card. Motion carries by majority. Article, whoa, we're through the 12s here. Is there any of the 12s that we have to do? Nope. Up to 14. Correct. Adam Town Clerk.
Kelly McCalliffe, 11 Maple, Maple Street. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $60,000 for the purpose of replacing the town hall server, including all expenses incidental and related.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Sorry about that. Pardon me. Capital Budget, favor as well. All those in favor, green cards. All those opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously.
Michael Bradley, Warren Street. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $350,000 for the purchase of replacing the ambulance for the fire EMS department, including all expenses incidental and related.
Second? Moved and seconded. FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
By the FinCon? Thank you, Chief. Any discussion? Oh, Capital Budget?
Thank you.
It's down here, too. It says CB right next to it. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor, hold up your green card. Opposed, red card. Okay. Uh, passes unanimously. 16. And I remember you this time, Capital Budget. Okay. Article 16. Chairman Duell.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $231,000 to be used for the purchase of a new front-end Loda, including all costs incidental and related.
Second.
Moved and seconded. FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action.
Any discussion? Capital Budget? It was written there, too. You see how I, I walk away and see what happened. Thank you. Next one's that way, too. We'll see if I make that mistake again. Okay. So seeing no discussion. All those in favor, hold up your green card. Okay. Opposed, red card. Passes unanimously. 17.
I move that the town to vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $400,000 to be used for the design permitting and bid document preparation associated with the replacement of the Grove Street Bridge with accommodations for foot traffic and utilities, including all costs incidental and related.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Capital Budget recommendation? All right. FinCon recommendation?
Favorable.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Here we go.
Susan Nolan, 7 Church Street. Um, I'd just like to ask the question, how the amount for this article was determined, the 400,000?
Okay. How'd we come up with 400 grand?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this, this amount is for permitting and design only. It has nothing to do with the construction of the bridge. Estimate for the construction of the bridge will come later after the design is done. And the calculation is done by, uh, Beta Engineering. They are the same group that designed the Fowler Bridge.
Okay.
Can I answer your question?
That answers my question.
Go ahead.
Could I just make a comment on that?
Sure. You can make a comment.
Actually, I work in the civil engineering field, and I write contracts. So I've just seen a pattern in town, um, with this project at 400,000. And I've taken a consensus at my office, too. And we see this as a project that should probably cost for design and permitting, even with conservation, um, maybe 100 to 150,000 dollars. Um, so I'm wondering where that exorbitant fee comes from. It's a very small bridge. Um, it's a 15-foot span. It's, I, I just don't understand.
So given the size of the bridge, the person feels like it's an awful lot of money, given the size of the bridge.
If you, if you would like to stop by my office, I'd be happy to go over the breakdown with you, and I'd look forward to input from you if you think we could do better.
Okay. And, and do you have, um, an assumption about what the construction costs would be?
1.5 million. Fowler Bridge was 1.3 million, to get, put it in perspective. This bridge is a little larger.
Oh, the Fowler Bridge was 1.3 million? Okay.
And it did not have a footbridge on it, which this will.
Okay. And are there prevailing wages on this to drive that price up?
Prevailing wages apply to everything the town does.
On a town project, because there's, I thought that was just federal funding for prevailing wages, if you're getting, it's all just town money. Okay. Even with prevailing wages.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it's a small bridge, but this is, this is what things cost, I guess. Okay. Any, any other comment? Go ahead. Say your name and address, please.
Linda Kaye. I live at 9 Fowler Street. Um, I'm making a comment because, um, well, I haven't been very involved in town issues until recently, but I will tell you that, um, I literally woke up and saw what was happening on Fowler Road, um, and I thought, why do we need a miniature version of the Zachem Bridge on a street that literally is very, I mean, we could have put a covered bridge where someone would wait two seconds for another car to pass through before they pass through. I mean, it is so much bridge for the space. And I understand we had some kind of a, maybe water thing that we were dealing with, but guess what? That ended up putting water all the way, I mean, it was like you, you dug a slough way to, you know, and the water just started moving into the rest of Warren Brook. And point of order?
Well, okay.
No, it's fine.
I understand what you're saying, but you have to turn it back to the other bridge. Know what I'm saying?
Okay. So anyway, that happened, and it is, seems absolutely an unbelievable amount of money to spend to, I, I don't know. I, I just, I guess it just seemed like a very inappropriate place to spend that kind of money on a bridge that gets very little use. There's other access points from that point.
Well, Grove Street does get a lot of use.
Anyway.
Yep.
Okay. Similar situation. Do we need a walking bridge? I don't know. Do we need a new bridge? I'm sure we need the bridge to be repaired. Bridge is everywhere. But I'm just saying, that was a lot of money. I don't think it was well-spent. Um, and I think that, you know, we should just take a B because when someone's asking for 400,000 dollars, but it's actually another million and a half, that's a very different conversation, and I think we should just table it.
Okay. Uh, sure. Mr. Brady? Yeah. Then we'll have you next, sir.
In regard to that article, just getting back to that Fowler Street Bridge, it's important for residents to note, there was a $500,000 state grant that we did receive to offset the cost of that. So sometimes when you hear those numbers, yes, I agree, they're very expensive. But with respect to the Fowler Street Bridge, there was a $500 grant that came off of that construction cost.
$500,000. Okay, good.
$500,000 that came off of that.
Okay, good.
Just so you know.
So back to the Grove Street situation.
Jim Forky, 7 Nathaniel Way. It sounds like there's a lot of debate on if this is a good investment or not, and it sounds like we've got a volunteer in the community who's willing to put their time and energy into working with the town to determine if this is a sufficient use of funds and if it's an appropriate amount. I'd say we table this motion until the volunteer has had time to work with the town and actually determine if, uh, it's sufficient use of funds.
So are you making a motion, are you making a motion to table this officially?
Yes. Yes. I make a motion to table the current motion. Table.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to table. So this is what happens. Somebody wants to table something, two things happen. One, it requires a two-thirds majority vote, and two, we can't discuss it. In other words, we can't talk about the merits of tabling or not. That's why it's a two-thirds majority vote. That's called a supermajority. So in order to table this, meaning that we're not going to deal with it now and we'll deal with it at some other time, two-thirds of you have to agree with tabling it. Okay? Does that make sense? Okay. So therefore, if you understand how it works, you have, do you have a question on procedure? Not right now. Right now, we have to deal with that point. Well, this is, we can't debate the issue right now.
I just want, Mr. Moderator, I just want people to be clear about what happens if they table it and we don't address this bridge because we're under a watch with Mastod right now.
Okay, fine. I, I, I understand what you're saying. Right now, we have to vote on the ta, whether it could get tabled or not, and then we'll deal with whatever else we have to deal with at that point. Well, that's a procedural thing. Right. So that means it could be dealt with later on in this meeting if it's taken off the table, which only requires a majority vote. So that's a fair question because it's a point about how tabling works. Okay?
Point of information. I will withdraw my motion if the conversation is to resume about the amount we should allocate, but I think there needs to be a conversation had between professionals in the, in the town before we can actually have that conversation.
So are you removing your motion for tabling?
Only if we're going to have that conversation now, but I don't think we have.
Well, I don't think we're going to have that conversation now.
Okay. Then I, the motion stays on the table.
So you still want to table it. Okay. We're done, we're done talking about tabling because we really, once that motion's made, we really can't have other discussion. But there were points about understanding what we're voting on, so that's okay. So remember, tabling means we're not going to deal with it. Okay? But it put it away. Could be taken from the table later on tonight, but who knows? So those in favor of tabling, hold up the green card. Okay? Those opposed to tabling, hold up your red card. Okay? It does not pass by two-thirds majority, clearly. So it has not been tabled. We'll go back to discussing the motion.
Dan Lazarus, 10 Farrar Road, member of the Capital Committee. Um, our Capital Committee has seven people on it. We're all in the design and construction business. We reviewed this extensively with the DPW Director. And two things, the bridge needs to be replaced. It is in disrepair, and it's to the, to the point of the DPW Director. It's a main thoroughfare. It's a thoroughfare for public safety. I mean, it's, it would be a difficult thing. I think when it comes to the, uh, the footbridge, I think we're a community that has complete streets in our federal law, so we have to have a requirement for complete streets. So you're going to have sidewalks and footbridges. That's the future. Bike lanes, that's what we're doing. Uh, probably the most important thing here, though, is Capital Budget in the future will be looking to adjust the question from the last speaker. We have had a discussion about looking at alternate delivery methods in the Commonwealth going forward with certain things. We've done almost everything in this community, Chapter 149. There is a 149A process, and there are other, other things to look at, but to the DPW Director's point, we do have a situation where the current process for public work in the state kind of is expensive. So it kind of is what it is. Um, I think Capital Budget, I'll bring that information back to Capital Budget so we can have a discussion about, is there opportunities to, to do things better in our review process?
Okay. Seeing that there's no more discussion, I think we're ready to vote. So again, now what the vote means is this. If you vote the green card, it means you're in favor of the 400,000 dollars that's been recommended. The red card means you're not in favor of that, and it requires a simple majority vote. Okay. All those in favor, hold up the green card. Okay. All those opposed, red card. It does pass by a majority. Okay. Motion for Article 18? Mr. Town.
Article 18. I move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise retained earnings a sum of $550,000 to be used for purchasing of all necessary equipment, materials permitting, engineering, and bidding and construction labor associated with providing the town's two water storage tanks to be filled to capacity while maintaining appropriate water pressures throughout the town's water system, including all costs incidental and related.
Moved and seconded. Capital Budget Committee Recommendation? Good. FinCon Committee?
Favorable.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, jeez. I'm sorry, folks. Green card. Thank you. Opposed, red card. Okay. Passes by a majority. Just for educational purposes, I have a son who loves watching me on the town meeting all the time. Every time I come home, he talks about how I say yay and nay, and I bang the gavel and this and that. Now it's green cards and red cards. So I'll have to explain that to him someday, but that's okay. All right? He still enjoys the process that I go through here. So thank you very much. Okay. We on 19? Okay. Article 19. Motion. Chairman Duell.
I move the town vote to transfer from the wastewater enterprise retained earnings the sum of $310,000 to be used for purchasing and installing a new backup generator at the wastewater treatment facility and continuing to the multi-phased flow infiltration program as stipulated in the DEP's acceptance letter, including all costs and incident.
Second. Second. Capital Budget? FinCon?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Ready discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, hold up your green card. Okay. All those opposed, red cards. Okay. Passes by unanimously. 20.
Mr. Moderator. Dave Ross, 23 Plumley Road.
Yep.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, lease, or otherwise convey in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, the land and all improvements thereon located at Zero Milford Street, shown on Assessor's the land and all improvements thereon located at Zero Milford Street, shown on Assessor's Map 201-53, for such sum or sums and upon such conditions determined by the Board of Selectmen to be in the best interest of the town, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute any and all instruments, including deeds, leases, or other agreements, and take all other actions necessary or appropriate to effectuate the vote taken hereunder.
Your second move is seconded. Is there a Fincom recommendation on this one or not? No? Okay, no? Oh, okay. No financial stuff here. Thank you, capital budget, you're all set? Okay, thank you. All right.
So, Mr. Moderator, I have three to four minutes just to let people know what we're actually voting on here.
Thank you very much.
So as everybody may remember, back in May of 2019, we approved the vision for the downtown redevelopment, and we've been working towards that. The parcel in question, which is known by some as the G A R lot, is there circled on the map. Sandy, if you can go to the next slide. So just a quick recap, over the last four to five years, we've done a lot to revitalize downtown, and I know maybe everybody doesn't see it on a day-to-day basis. We bought Holy Angels, we passed the vision, we've created the Upton Center Business District, we changed the table use to allow mixed-use property downtown, to allow a brewery to be located downtown, we approved a new share parking bylaw. Next slide. We voted funding to design the community center, we passed the community center. We bought 6 Main Street and tore that down and created a nice grass lot behind the current Restine Building. Warren Street has been closed as a thoroughfare, which was in line with the vision. We bought the gravel lot located next to the brewery and cleaned that up that had pollution on it. It is now a nice, clean site that the town owns. And we've started working on the community center, and recently, the EDC secured a donation of zero Warren Street, which is land located right next to the Town Hall parking lot, which that owner donated. So here's an overview of downtown. Just to clarify, the piece of land that we're talking about is a tenth of an acre located there in the circle to the left of Holy Angels. Right now, that is town-owned land, and we want to include that in the redevelopment of downtown. So go to the next slide, Sandy. So here's the, to the right, the overview of what those parcels look like. It's the red parcel there, and you can see that it wraps along the brook behind Holy Angels Church. So right now, if the town tries to redevelop Holy Angels Church and sells that to a developer, they don't actually have access to the brook, which is one of the, I think, potential benefits of that parcel. Somebody wants to redevelop it and be able to have access to the brook. It also leaves the town potentially exposed, that we would have to maintain that piece of property, or somebody was back there and something happened. It would not be on the new landowners, it would still be on our property. So if we vote in favor of this tonight, the red parcel and the green parcels, which are all town-owned, will be available to the Board of Selectmen to convey to a future developer of the site. The pink parcel is owned by a resident of the town who has, in the past, expressed a desire to work with us so that that whole section around Center Brook can be redeveloped. And just one last thing, if you go to the last slide, Sandy, a number of people here probably know that that is the former site of the G A R building, the Grand Army of the Republic Hall, which at one time served as the Fire Department Headquarters for the building. We plan to make it a requirement to any potential developer of this parcel that the memorial commemorative plaque that is located there will have to remain on the site in some way, shape, or form. So if the town does decide to sell or convey this property, that plaque, it may not remain exactly where it is, it may need to be shifted left or right, depending on what the development is. In my personal opinion, if that plaque was included in the development of that parcel, more people will actually see it and understand the history of that site, because right now, most people are driving by at very high speeds on 140, and don't even realize the pretty neat history of that parcel. So that is why we are asking for authorization to be allowed to sell that. Then, to clarify, this is just authorization, we do not have a buyer at this time. We're working on issuing the RFP, hopefully later this summer, to draw interest, but we want to have all of our ducks in a row at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See none? Okay, all those in favor of the motion derived from Article 20, please hold up your green cards. Red cards against? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Article 21.
Michael Bradley, Warren Street. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of the third sentence of Mass General Law, Chapter 32, Section 4, Subsection 2B, allowing a reserve or permanent intermittent police officer or a reserve, permanent intermittent, or call firefighter retiring from the town to receive, in addition to the five years of credit allowed pursuant to the preceding sentence of the statute, one day of full-time service credit for each day in any year which is subsequent to the fifth year following said appointment, and on which a reserve or permanent intermittent police officer or a reserve, permanent intermittent, or call firefighter was assigned to and actually performed duty as a reserve or permanent intermittent police officer or a reserve, permanent intermittent, or call firefighter, provided, however, that such service as a permanent intermittent or call firefighter shall be credited only if such firefighter was later appointed as a permanent member of the Fire Department.
Second? Moved and seconded. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Do I have any other recommendations on this? Nope, okay. Any discussion? Chief, you want to make some comments about it?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, essentially what this allows, much like military members, they can buy back their time to the retirement system, it allows our reserves, police and fire, to buy a certain amount of their time that they put in and get credited for that in the retirement system.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, see none. All those in favor, hold up your green cards. Opposed, red cards. Okay, motion carries by a majority. 22.
Article 22. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $45,000 to purchase a 14-passenger minivan, including all expenses incidental and related.
Second?
Folks, this is the senior center van.
Thank you. Fincom Recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Capital Budget Recommendation? Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I think it'd be beneficial if the body politic were aware that the cost of this vehicle is in excess of $80,000. The balance of the money is coming from an agreement that the developers of Rockwood Meadow made with the planning board, however many years ago it was when they permitted Rockwood Meadow. So the amount you see here is only a portion of the cost of the vehicle.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up your green card. Okay, opposed, red card. Motion carries unanimously. Article 23. Just kidding.
Good evening. Paul Carey, 6 F from his way. I move that the town vote to amend Section 300-7.5 Large Lot Frontage Reduction Zoning Bylaw as on file with the town clerk.
Second? Moved and seconded. Thank you. I guess that there's a handout? Sure, there was a handout, but it would probably be good to explain what all this means.
Certainly, this is a relatively minor changes to a bylaw that's been on the books for a while. The Large Lot Frontage Reduction Bylaw allows people that have a lot that is, that doesn't have adequate frontage for a building lot, but does have enough acreage and enough frontage that they could do a small subdivision on the property to instead do one or two trophy lots. So that's been on the books for a while, we've had several of them approved by the planning board, and the changes that you see in the handout in red line essentially clarify some points that the planning board wanted to make folks aware of.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, see none, hold up the green cards for yes. Two-thirds majority, thank you very much. Red cards for no. It clearly passes by a two-thirds majority. Thank you for that clarification. 25.
I move that the town vote to accept as a public way the roadway known as Summer's Circle as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on a plan of land entitled Layout of Plan of Summer's Circle dated August 17, 2020, prepared by Guerrero and Halman, Inc., and on file with the town clerk, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire, by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or easements in Summer's Circle for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Upton, and any drainage, utility, and/or other easements related thereto.
Second. Move and seconded. And this does require a two-thirds majority vote?
Planning Board favorable action.
Planning Board favorable action, very good. Any discussion at all, or? So, why don't you explain real quickly what we're talking about?
Summer's Circle is a small subdivision that's off of, this one is off of Grove Street.
Grove Street.
And it's been wintered over. One winter, the planning board had a public hearing, and we approved it after input from the DPW Directors and neighbors.
Okay.
It's a built development, all the homes are built and I believe are all occupied.
But, please, if you have one question, you got to come to the mic, or, you know, why don't you explain what, where we're talking about?
So if you go down Grove Street, it will be on the left-hand side, it's a relatively new development. It's been built out for over a year now.
Yep. Okay, so it's right after the railroad tracks, right?
Right, right by the railroad tracks.
By the railroad tracks. Okay, any other discussion? See none? All those in favor, hold up your green cards. All opposed, hold up the red cards. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Article 26. Citizens petition. Ready here for that? Oh, is there anybody here? I guess there's not. Okay, well, if there's no one here, then there's a motion to pass over. Is there a second? Any discussion? See none, all those in favor, passing over Article 26, hold up the green cards. All opposed, red cards. Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Before we get to Article, before the town, that's all right, yeah. Before we get to Article 27, there was one or two individuals who wanted to make a comment regarding some citizens here in the community who are going to be moving away. So, Mr. Gazarian?
Richard Gazarian, Fire and Bywood Land. There were two people in attendance this evening who, in my mind, epitomize what it's like to be an Upton resident. They are on numerous committees, have been on numerous committees, and have been more dedicated than most of the people you ever meet. I'd like them both to stand. Rena Richard? This is their final Upton Town Meeting.
On behalf of everybody, thank you very much. Twenty-seven. Right, citizens petition. Anybody here for that? Anybody here to make a motion on that?
Mr. Moderator, I will read pass over on Article 27.
Okay, motion to pass over, seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, hold up the green cards. Okay, hold up, opposed, hold up your red cards. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I just want to say a couple things. You know, every year I say a little something at the end sometime. You never quite know how many you're going to turn out, okay? But you know what? In a way, that's the beauty of living in a community and a state and a country where we have the democracy. I was saying to someone earlier, whatever's going to happen tonight, however hectic it might be, they've never been able to do that in Russia, and unfortunately, they can't do that in a place like Ukraine anymore. So just remember how fortunate we are as a nation to be able to be here. Mr. Robinson, you're on.
John Robinson, 59 Mechanic Street. I move that we dissolve the war and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second. Hold up your hands up. Say aye! Thank you, everybody.